Good evening. I will call a meeting to order at this time. You will please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll let Mayor Proton lead us in the invocation, please.
That is a prayer. Father, Lord, we come to you this evening to do business in our community, Lord, and make decisions to help make our community better. Father, we pray that you'll be with us, help us make positive decisions and things that highlight and make us what we need to be and what our vision for our future is, Father. We ask that, Lord, that you be with our children as they venture back to school, Lord, and keep a safe watch over them at every campus in the state and its nation, Father, and this community, that you'll just make it what it needs to be and provide safety and environment where they can learn and be successful. Lord, those that are sick in our community, we lift them up, that you'll be with them during this time. We ask all this in Christ's name.
Amen. You will please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will ask Girl Scout Troop 614 to come to the front and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Hey, gentlemen, I have the agenda in front of you. We do have a couple of known changes, a couple of additions to the consent agenda, one being just more of a formality, which is a special event approval that actually happened Monday at the Twisted Sister Restaurant, the bar located at 709 South Third Street, requesting to conduct a Labor Day cookout Monday at four o'clock until seven, which amplified The other one is consideration and approval to adopt Resolution Number 626, adopting necessary policies pertaining to the Community Development Block Grant for neighborhood revitalization. Next is consideration and approval to adopt Resolution Number 627 with submission of a Community Development Block Grant application for neighborhood revitalization to benefit southeast Smithfield. We did have one proclamation presentation tonight for Ms. Regina Sanders, however, her husband, Mr. Daniel Sanders, who's been a long time Planning Board member and member of our Parks and Recreation Committee, is not doing well, and so he is ill, and she's not going to be here this evening, so we will postpone that until a later date. And I think that is all that I have as far as the known agenda items.
Mayor, I would like to move item number three on consent agenda to business item number five.
Number three on the consent agenda, consideration and approval to amend the fiscal year 2018 through 2019, be scheduled for strike raids for town of Smithfield employees. Any other changes or revisions?
Mayor, I move we approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you. Motion, second to approve the agenda, with all in favor. This time, our first proclamation is declaring September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week in the town of Smithfield. At this time, I would like to ask if there are any members of the Smith Bryan Chapter, the CAR, to come to the front, and I will present them with proclamation.
Okay. Proclamation, Constitution Week, September 17th through the 23rd, 2018, in the town of Smithfield. Whereas September 17th, 2018, marks the 231st anniversary of drafting the Constitution of the United States of America by a Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated September 17th through September 23rd as Constitutional Week. Now, therefore, I, Andy Moore, Mayor of the town of Smithfield, do hereby proclaim September 17th through the 2018 to be Constitutional Week in the town of Smithfield, and I ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals, the framers of the constitutions had in 1787 by militantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us that guardian liberties, remembering that laws rights may never be regained.
We wanted to ask you a couple of constitutional conclusions. We have the request of this one, and a public law two more. We want to have a constitutional question from your office.
Thank you very much. to come forward for a special proclamation. Hey, this proclamation is in honor of Reginald Eddie Foye's dedicated service to the town of Smithfield's Planning Board and Board of Adjustment. Whereas Reginald E. Foye, a lifelong resident of the town of Smithfield, has dedicated his time and attention by serving on the Planning Board and Board of Adjustment for over 15 years. And whereas during his tenure, Reginald E. Foye served as chairman of the Planning Board, and whereas Reginald E. Foye provided exemplary and invaluable service towards the future development and vision of Smithfield. And whereas the citizens are so fortunate to have had a person of such experience dedicate so many years of his service to the town of Smithfield's growth and prosperity. And whereas the Town Council deeply appreciates the important contribution Mr. Foye has made to the town of Smithfield for its citizens. Now, therefore, I, Andy Moore, Mayor of the town of Smithfield, along with the members of the Town Council, express our sincere appreciation to Mr. Foye for his distinguished service to the town of Smithfield. Thank you very much, sir. (APPLAUSE).
I do want to just add that, you know, one thing I've mentioned several times as Mayor is community involvement from our citizens. We're only as good as the input that our citizens provide to us. And Mr. Foye, I've known you for, Mr. Foye.
Not that long.
I've known you for a long, long time, and I sincerely do appreciate your service, your dedication, and your passion for the town of Smithfield. We truly do appreciate it. And to Ms. Foye, thank you for allowing him to dedicate so much of his time. Fifteen years is a long time, and we certainly do appreciate your service. Would you like to say?
Thank you very much. It has been a pleasure. I've certainly enjoyed it, and I hope that my service has been of benefit to the town, and certainly hope that I haven't been too disruptive at times, but it's been a pleasure, and I've enjoyed it, and look forward to the continued good growth of the town. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
At this time, we'll move on to administering the oath of office to newly promoted Sergeant Brandon Smith with the Smithfield Police Department.
I, Brandon Smith.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States. That I will continue to be faithful.
That I will continue to be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
State of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are, or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
That I will endeavor to support.
That I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
That I will be alert.
That I will be alert.
And vigilant.
And vigilant.
To enforce the criminal laws.
To enforce the criminal laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
That I will not be influenced.
That I will not be influenced.
In any manner, on account of personal bias.
On account of personal bias.
Or prejudice.
Or prejudice.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Execute the duties of my office.
Execute the duties of my office.
As police sergeant.
As police sergeant.
According to the best of my skill.
According to the best of my skill.
Abilities.
Abilities.
And judgment.
And judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Be safe. Thank you.
Our first public hearing this evening is a quasi judicial hearing, so if there's anyone wishing to speak on this matter for or against this matter, please stand at this time to be sworn in by the clerk.
Do you want to testify? Do you testify? Okay. Please solemnly affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God.
Thank you. Gentlemen, the first public hearing is SUP 18-10 Hampton Inn. The applicant is requesting a special use permit to construct a hotel that will exceed 40 feet in height within the B3 zoning district. The property considered for special use permit is located on Town Center Place, approximately 600 feet south of its intersection with East Market Street. The property is further identified as Johnston County Tax ID Number 15L11001G. This time, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Move, Mayor.
Second. A motion and a second, all in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. So the request, as the mayor said, is a special use permit to exceed the 40-foot height limit in the B3 Highway District. Building heights may be increased above 40 feet to a maximum of 100 feet through the issuance of a special use permit. So this is the location of the property at the end of the cul-de-sac, just near the outlet mall and near I-95. The adjacent zoning to the north is B3, undeveloped. To the south, B3, there's a stormwater pond located there for the whole development. To the west, it's O&amp;I Office Institutional, that's the college, and to the east, it's B3 undeveloped. Okay? It's a 3.51 acre parcel in the B3 undeveloped presently, hotel is proposed, it'll have town water and sewer and possibly electrical service. They are proposing a 69-foot tall hotel to be located on that lot. There'll be an eight-inch existing water main and 10-inch sewer main in the right-of-way there. Stormwater pipes drain from the right-of-way to the storm pond. The road is a 34-foot wide road back to curb, and there's an existing sidewalk. Again, there's the existing conditions. They're proposing 110-room hotel with 115 parking spaces. The landscape plan meets or exceeds the town standards. Existing stormwater control measures are designed to accommodate the hotel, and the setbacks will exceed the minimums, reducing impacts from additional height that may be created by the tall building. This is the site plan for the hotel. It's got two accesses off the cul-de-sac. As I mentioned, the parking meets requirements, and the setback exceeds the setback limits. This is a elevation of the building, if you can see. It's not too dissimilar from other hotels we have in that district, also receiving special use permits to exceed the height. Staff has prepared a number of findings of fact, draft findings of fact, for the council to consider. I'm not going to go through them, but if you wish to. Staff does believe that they have met all the findings of fact. And staff and the planning department and the Planning Board recommend approval, sorry, not the Planning Board, excuse me. The Planning Board recommends approval of the request to allow the 69-foot tall hotel on the 3.51 acre parcel in the B3 with one condition, that it meets the UDO ordinance With that, any questions?
Any questions at this time?
Yes, sir. The reason this comes before us as a special use is because it's greater than 40 feet?
Correct.
No other reason, just the?
No other reasons. It's in the UDO that if a building wants to exceed 40 feet, it needs a special use permit. And the purpose of a special use permit is to mitigate any concerns regarding the height, whether it's increasing setbacks or whatever might the need be.
The height would have no effect on stormwater runoff. That'd be the same, whether it was one-story or?
As I said, there are other hotels in the area. This is really in keeping with what has been approved previously with other hotels.
Do we have all the hotels the same height already?
They're similar height. I'm not sure exact height, but they've exceeded 40 feet.
Any other questions at this time? Applicant is here, represented, fully sworn. Any other, any other items you would like to add at this time?
I don't really have any questions.
So you heard the testimony that was presented. Do you agree with everything that you stated?
I do. The only thing I would request is that we're allowed to go this way. The elevations are quite steep. We're going to put it in top there, but in case there's a, if you would have the official court.
Yes.
Hear that?
Mm-hmm.
Would it be appropriate to add in there 69 feet with a variance of 10 or 15 percent?
That'd be appropriate.
I would hate for us to put a definitive number that come in at 70 feet, six inches, and it's got to start all over.
It's not a staff concern.
And that has happened.
I'd challenge in the building to 12-story.
How you got it? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this matter? Any additional questions from the council? Not, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Findings of fact or?
Mayor, I move we approve all findings of fact except for on page, we've all read on page 14, findings of fact 1 through 8.
Second. A motion and a second to approve findings of fact, all in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, I move we approve the request with a variance of 15 percent of the height.
Second. Motion and a second to approve with a variance of 15. Height? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Look forward to having you in Smithfield.
Thank you.
I was looking to you for some guidance on that.
So our next item, public hearing, is not a quasi judicial hearing, therefore, there is no need for anyone to be sworn in. This is ZA-18-06, Town of Smithfield. The Planning Department is requesting an ordinance amendment to the UDO, Article 5, to update and make corrections to the development review process. At this time, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Turn it over, Stephen.
Thank you. So as the mayor mentioned, that this is a staff-driven change. Feel it's necessary to improve the development process, make it easier and a shorter process. On January 2nd, the town of Smithfield approved an ordinance amendment to allow administrative approval of the UDO, sorry, administrative approval of site plans by the UDO administrator when major site plans and final plats are found to meet or exceed the minimum development standards. Since then, staff's become more familiar with the Article 5 and has determined that additional amendments are needed. So again, sorry, council, Planning Board and council approval of major site plans was changed to just be an administrative procedure. And in using this, we've realized that, this wasn't apparent to me before, is that right now, the final plats require Planning Board review and city-town council approval. And typically, a final plat is just more or less a stamp of approval to what has already been determined at the preliminary level, and actually, construction has already happened. Typically, with a final plat approval, you get any land dedications, street dedications, those sort of things are kind of discussed, and then it's just a check of approval prior to, you know, releasing the lots for development, or sorry, releasing the lots for purchase. So we don't see the real benefit of Planning Board review in this process. Planning staff believes the text amendment is consistent with the town of Smithfield Growth Plan and other plans, and is reasonable in the public interest. And the Planning Board also reviewed this and is in agreement with staff's recommendations. And with that, I'd answer any questions you might have.
Questions from the council? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak? Please come to the.
I live, do I need to say where I live?
Yes, ma'am.
207 Hancock Street, Smithfield. I was looking at the agenda today. When I looked at this, I was thinking that our Planning Board was there for a reason, and I don't think that they mind if they have to repeat something that might need to be repeated, or like you said, at the end, they have things, dedications, dedications and different things that might need to have that time done there. And so I don't always think that making things shorter and more efficient is always better. I just think that you need to think that this is something that has been there for a long time, not saying that it doesn't need to change, but I do think that it needs to have a little bit of foresight and thought about it, other than just making this. And I didn't realize that they had done something in January already. So it sounds like y'all have sort of already made up your mind about deleting that. This is just a formal thing?
No, in January, just to clarify, in January, we took site plan review.
Right.
From board and council approval to staff approval.
Correct.
And this is still going to require, this is final plat approval, that'll still require council approval, just not Planning Board.
Right, but it, all, what I'm saying is, that is the public, that they have given their time to doing this, and one of the things that they have is the right to see this in the final presentation of what's going to happen to the town. And I just don't always think that cutting that out is going to leave the people with a place to say whatever they want to say, whether it is dedications or whatever. I just think that you need to give it some thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gimble. Anyone else wishing to speak? Questions from the council?
Well, Stephen had to pitch on the spot, but that's why we're here. Can you address Ms. Gimble's concern?
When a development is first proposed, it does go to the Planning Board, and that's really where, you know, a lot of the issues are worked out at the preliminary stage. So statutorily, by the time the preliminary plat is approved, what happens at final plat? There's really not a lot you can change, other than small little items, but if any major change occurs, it's in violation of the preliminary plat. So the final plat process doesn't really have a lot of benefit to having Planning Board review, in staff's opinion. The town attorney's here also. We're looking at it, we have a number of developments coming, and we want to be as efficient as possible, and there's always pressure to get in the ground at the right time of year, and we just don't see the value, and really just trying to be efficient with our time, with their time, and the council's time, and the Planning Board.
They're the complaints I get, too, is the time when you have to go before the Planning Board, and then go before council as well, but what are some things that can change between preliminary plat approval and final plat?
There's always smaller design changes when you go from preliminary engineering to final engineering, but typically, you know, some slight grading changes can happen. Sometimes a road may move a foot or two, but as long as you're not changing road directions, changing utility directions, or changing pipe sizes by a significant amount, I mean, the small things on the edges are fine, but as long as the overall development maintains intact, as was approved at the preliminary phase, you know, you guys have seen the master plan for the Buffalo Road subdivision, that one is by no means, what you saw was by no means a preliminary approval.
Right.
There's a lot of engineering and detail and design that needs to go into a preliminary engineering to approve a plat, so by the time you get to final plat, it's really just small things come up, like with any project, that need changes.
Buffer sizes don't change.
They don't change.
Road locations don't change.
No.
Stormwater.
You know, only if there were slight errors in their calculations or something that was missed, they get addressed at final plat. I mean, those things can happen, but they are not material change. I mean, those things can happen, but they're not material changes. And any material change would have to be back through the preliminary process.
Thank you.
Yep.
Did you not, you also said that you discussed this with the planning board, and they were in agreement with.
Correct.
So they're, they don't see, they see it, it sounds to me like that they think it's kind of a waste of time for it to come back to them either. Correct?
I don't know what it shows for words, but they approved, they recommended approval.
Sounds like a waste of time, then. If they just said approval, they didn't care about it, it's a waste of their time. So, it's my opinion, I put it in there, go ahead.
Any other questions? Do you not want to entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Make the motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, if I could make a comment. Since we revised our UDO, we've had a, seems like every month, one or two requested changes. Which is fine, that's what we wanted. We wanted a document that was revised from time to time. We even put that into revision in the UDO. But would it be possible for a comprehensive review and try to weed out a lot of the problems at one time, as opposed to doing two or three a month?
Can I address this? Yeah, I talked to the manager about this, and my intentions were to bring article by article forward from here on. And the manager suggests that maybe it be done in a workshop-type setting, so that there's more free discussion of the changes and makes it easier to understand what you're approving.
Well, I was on that committee as well as Councilmember Dunn. And I can tell you that I have never seen a group of citizens in committee work as hard as we did and put the time in we did on that UDO revision. And it just pains me greatly that we are having so many problems. And I'm not, I don't want to cast dispersion, but I really felt like we did not get the proper advice and guidance when we went through that process from the experts. Not you, not our town staff. But it just, it is very disheartening to me. And I think the rest of members of that committee, too, have put the kind of time in and good faith effort. So, I would like to, if we can, just find the problems and get it done and move on. Just a comment. Thank you.
I will entertain a motion at this time. Request.
I move we approve the request.
Second.
Motion second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Our next item this evening is public hearing, community development block grant. The purpose of this public hearing is to obtain citizen input to identification of community needs and desired CD, D, activities. This is again not a quasi judicial hearing, so therefore no need for anyone to be sworn in at this time. I will entertain a motion to open that public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
And I'll ask Mr. Skip Green to come forward at this time for the presentation.
Thank you. This is the second required public hearing as far as the community development block grant. For purposes, I'll briefly explain what the proposed application is for the town to submit to the North Carolina Department of Commerce, and then we'll open it up for comment. The proposed community development block grant will occur in this particular area, which has been identified as a target area. It basically, it's Rand Street over to Martin Luther King, as far as the, where the particular area is. For the last month, there's been, we've been surveying that particular area. The activities that are proposed to go on there is housing rehab, demolition and clearance, are the two major activities, and also a relocation. The proposed, right now, would be two thousand five hundred dollars, that would be for relocation. This would be temporary relocation that would be needed as homes were being rehabilitated. We're looking at approximately six hundred and seventy thousand dollars, that would be for the, to rehab houses. We've tentatively identified twenty-eight houses that are in need of rehab, and the homeowners qualify. Then we'd use approximately seventy thousand dollars, that would be to clear dilapidated structures. The survey of the particular area, we saw between ten to fourteen unoccupied structures that seem that to be dilapidated and need as far as to be demolished. The idea that we have is to go into that area. All the homeowners that want to participate, then qualify, would be to rehab those houses and also to do the clearance. This, the homes and the clearance are major items that have come out. We've had two neighborhood meetings, and this has been expressed by the citizens at these meetings. We would hope to go in here, it's up to three-year project. We would hope to go in, complete this, and then expand out. The idea would be to continue to expand this area in southeast Smithfield until the rehabilitation and also the demolition and clearance were taken care of. And then hopefully, at the council's direction, move to other areas throughout the town for this type of activity. One thing I'd like to quickly just go through is the, this, the housing program itself is restricted to homeowners. So only homeowners can have their homes rehabilitated under this program. The assistance is a deferred loan, so that the individual, if they sell their home or leave their home within a period of time, a portion of the grant, of the loan may have to be repaid. If the loans vary from five to seven years, depending on how much the loan is. Each year it's reduced, so five-year loan, each year it's reduced by twenty percent. And the reason that it's set up as a deferred loan is to keep someone from getting their house rehabbed and making a profit off of it. The purpose is to help in safety and not for someone to make a buck off of it. This is different than some of the past community development block grants, because in past times, you could use these funds to also do rental properties. And also, you cannot anymore under this particular program. That is basically what's being proposed. I'll be glad to entertain any questions y'all may have.
Questions for Skip?
So, you mentioned the area that you're looking at. What determine those boundaries as far as, why couldn't it be a more broader section?
Well, the main thing was the amount of money we have. We knew we only had most six fifty or six seventy, even if we weren't doing any demolition and clearance. And we didn't see a reason to make a real large area to have people whom we knew were going to run out of money. So, that's the reason, tried to start concentrating, not, everyone's hopes, hopefully, but that's the reason we didn't make it large.
Have you guys done a preliminary survey and see the number of homeowners?
Yeah, we've actually have twenty-eight homeowners that have filled out applications for payment. And that included income verification. So, we've got twenty-eight. That was some concern, just since this is set up as a deferred loan, about how interested some of the people. But I think we're about sixty-five or seventy percent of the homeowners that we went to wanted to participate in the program.
Mayor Proton, I might also add, when we looked at this process, it was important to us to be certain that we were taking a systematic approach to rehabbing these homes, rather than a shotgun approach where we were just going to have pockets of repairs all over town. We wanted to move systematically throughout the area that we thought would get the most, had the most need, and then systematically move throughout the entire community, the entire town. We're looking at this as a long-range project, not a one-year project. So we're hoping that we can continue to receive these grants for four, five, six years into the future every year, and continually rehab homes throughout our communities. We're hoping to move that way, rather than just a little here and a little there.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, I have a question, two questions.
Yes, sir.
Is this a grant or is this a loan?
It's called a community development block grant. The grant is to the town. The town, as the homes are being rehabbed, they will request money, which will be used to pay the contractors. The homeowners themselves are filling, will be filling out a loan application. The town will have a deed of trust against the property. So to the property owner, it is a loan, a deferred loan, which will range between five to seven years.
And the second question, were the deeds submitted as far as demolition? Was the demolition put out on a deed situation?
We haven't received the grant yet. If the grant was received, then to use community development block grant money, you would have to go out for procurement. So if community development block grant money is directly used for demolition, same as for the housing rehab, it has to go out for procurement on it.
And where we're doing a deed situation or not, I mean, generally, the way it should be done.
With federal money, you pretty much do that. Yes, sir.
Not always. Could you mention my question back?
I have, just for clarification, the notes and deeds of trust are self-canceling over time.
Yes, sir.
The homeowner doesn't pay the money back. If they sell it, make a profit, they do, but if it cancels a percentage every year.
Now, my point is far the grant version of the law.
It's, if a person lives there for the duration, it becomes a grant. But it's structured what they call deferred loan.
Yes. Any other questions? I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make the motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Thank you, Mr. Green. At this time, we will come to citizens' comments. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak at this time, if you will, please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Judd Patterson, address is four eighteen Westman Place in Smithfield. So I just wanted to bring up the parking situation again, and just see if there had been any thought given to some of the suggestions I made the last council meeting. The suggestion being considering making South Third Street one-way and have angled parking. That's my first question.
At this point, we're in the midst of a transportation study throughout the town. We'll address it at that time through the transportation study. But other than that, we haven't taken any action.
So, my next question would be, what can I do, or what, how long will that take? What do I need to do to help spur it along?
Well, one thing you can do is you can participate in the process. You can go online at our webpage, on the very front page is a survey you can take for a comprehensive plan that's coming up. And then you can also attend a meeting that's advertised there. It's also on the hallway out there for September eighteenth.
September eighteenth.
At the Shrag.
So on the Town of Smithfield website, and.
And what time does that meeting start, Steve? Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, September eighteenth?
Yes.
Suzanne, you got that?
Okay, thank you very much. No problem, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson.
So I understand that the enforcement of the parking two-hour limit on South Third, well, I guess around downtown, is kind of on hold until the Austin Manor apartment renovations complete. Any idea when that's going to be? Because the enforcement was in effect for a little while, I got a couple of tickets myself. But it seems to not be enforced right now.
We're enforcing all the parking downtown, except right there, where in front of Austin Manor, because we have to have construction trucks parked there. So, we have allowed them to park there, in that area, so that we can get that building done. But other than that, parking should be being enforced.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Please, ma'am.
Mayor, I want to make one comment, Mr. Patterson. I appreciate your comments, I appreciate your thoughts on that. I think there's stuff that can be done, and I appreciate your input. And let me just say, I know there's been some conversations, but that's all we can have at this point. Like I said, there's a lot of work has to be done. But your, my point to you is, your comments are not on deaf ears. We hear what you're saying, and it is, there are, that's part of being looked at and other things. But, so just keep talking, because we're listening, just you can't, you can't move it. An elephant don't move on a dime and a quick turn, you know, it just takes time. But we appreciate your comments, my point to you. Thank you, sir.
Be at the Shrag.
At the Shrag.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Lucy Washington, I live off, where do I live? Four or six first Street, Pannequins. But I'm speaking on behalf of the East Smithfield in the area. He was just talking about doing some rehabilitation on the homes. I grew up in that neighborhood. I love that neighborhood, and I, it hurts me to see it come down to where it is. Now, they're going to fix up homes, which is wonderful. But there are a lot of homes that's owned by other people that don't live in the neighborhood. And they are sitting there empty, falling down, grass and trees and all grow around them, and nobody's doing anything about it. Who wants to put a beautiful, nice home beside this kind of house? So, I think the town needs to get only, the owners of those homes, either have them to tear it down or fix it up or do something, because it's gonna, it's gonna make, it's gonna look bad. You've got nice, beautiful homes that they could fix up, and here you are with these homes sitting here, they're falling apart, and the owners are someplace else. And I know y'all know where they are. Some of them right here in Smithfield, they own their homes, and they are sitting there empty. Right on Block Street, Block and, what's that, Broadland Road, there's two homes right there. And I complained about that before, and nobody seemed to do anything about it. I'm asking the town to please take that into consideration. We want to clean up that area, let's do it all the way. If they don't live here, they need to do something about it. Keeping it clean, keeping their house clean and fixing it up or whatever. But they're all empty houses, and that's not good. My church is in that area, right down the street from there. I went down there today, and there's garbage all up and down the highway, the road on Block Street. Bag of garbage, I don't know what day they pick up, I think it's on a Friday. But they're there today. They don't bring their garbage cans in the yard, they leave it sitting on the side of the road. I don't know if there's a law about that or not. Could someone tell me, if you have a garbage can, do you suppose to leave it on the side of the road or bring it back in your yard? But then y'all need to enforce that law, because they'd be outside, and ready for my children, I don't know. So, as a taxpayer, I feel like, you know, you got to think about us, too. about us, too. If it, I have a whole lot of other complaints. I live in Pine Acres, but there's some complaints going on there, too. But I'm not going to get into that now. But I just want y'all to take, be considerate of the area that he was speaking about, down on Blunt Street, in that area. They're going to be nice to, and hopefully that they get the money to do it, to fix up their homes, then make the other owners fix up theirs or tear it down. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Washington.
And I would only comment that we are well aware of that, and we really appreciate your comments. We had a meeting here just this evening where we talked just about Blunt Street amongst some other areas. But Blunt Street was a focus as far as homes that we are looking at, as using for part of this grant money that Skip was just talking about. So, we hear you, and we're doing the best we can with it. One home that you talked about on the corner, Brogdon Road and Blunt Street, has gone through the entire process, and it's now in the town attorney's hands. So, we can't get a hold of anyone responsible for that home. We had, wanted to burn it down, and at one time, we contacted the owner, and he was amenable to it, but we can't reach him any longer to get him to sign the form. So, now we have to go through the whole legal process, and that's where we're at with that home. So, I know it's taken a while, but it is a timely process to take someone's home out of their hands and tear it down. But, thank you.
Just, Ms. Washington, I'm just looking at the report for condemnation. Just so that you know, and I'm just scanning this, right? One, two, three. At least three of the homes on Blunt Street are under condemnation proceedings right now. That's just on Blunt Street. And I'd say probably eighty-five to ninety percent of the homes on this list are in East Smithfield. So, like the manager said, it takes time. We just can't go out and take someone's home and tear it down and so forth. There is a legal proceeding that we have to go through and follow. But they're on the list. They're being followed. The manager sends us a report every single month, and gives us an update of where we are. So, it's happening. It just takes time. I get it. I know. Roll your eyes at me. I got it. I'm used to it, right? I know where you live, right? So, I am used to it, and I appreciate it. So, just letting you know, we continue on.
Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. We will move on to the consent agenda. We entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Make the motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. Thank you. A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as amended. On the favor. We'll now move on to the business items. Our first business item this evening is ZA-1805. County Smithfield, Planned Department is requesting an ordinance amendment to the town of Smithfield UDO, Article 10, Part 3, regulations for signs to allow for on-site high-rise identification signs on properties located within the B3 zoning district, and that are within six hundred and sixty feet from the Interstate 95 right away. Mr. Ashley, on the favor, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Planning Director, I'll turn it over to you at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. So, this item was before you last month as a public hearing, and there were a number of questions that the council had. So, I want to jump to the responses to those. The questions had to do with lighting, the cost of high-rise signs between fifty and a hundred feet, and whether there should be a single standard for all signs, and the spacing between the high-rise signs. So, I have clipped all the sections of the lighting code here as a response. But essentially, electronic message boards and kinetic sign lighting displays shall not exceed thirty square feet. Lighting shall be directed towards a sign. Nothing about, you know, LED lights, which was really the concern that I heard at that meeting. So, I would say that those concerns are really not an issue. They're not, it's not the freeway pole signs that are brightly lit. Those are not allowed. The next issue had to do with the range of costs. I was able to get ahold of a sign contractor, and a hundred-foot tall signs are plus or minus three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Fifty-foot tall signs range from a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five thousand for a four hundred, three hundred, four hundred square foot sign. And in terms of a single height standard, those sign heights obviously are based on cost, site conditions, and visibility. Typically, you know, one-size-fits-all sign for visibility from like a freeway maybe doesn't work, because there's other obstacles, whether it's trees, other buildings, other signs. So, they need to position those signs, and they do a study to determine what height sign they need. Of course, they got to fit within our UDO, which is a range of fifty to a hundred feet. So, some will go to the max. Sometimes, the max is not the best height, and they will shrink it, or their budget doesn't want to spend money for a hundred-foot sign, and they choose to go with a shorter sign. So, that's that issue. And the distance between signs, Benson allows high-rise signs only if the lot is a hundred feet, if it has a hundred feet of street frontage. Dunn is the same. Sanford allows high-rise signs, a max of twenty-five feet, one per property. Nothing about spacing. Raleigh requires a two-hundred-foot street frontage, so sometimes it's being controlled by frontage requirements. So, I've not found any codes that really deal with spacing between signs other than using frontage requirements. I know the DOT had requirements of spacing on the freeway so that there's not too many along a corridor, and that is not part of this ordinance. With that, answer any questions you still may have.
Questions continue.
The new hotel this proposed.
Correct.
They're not on 95.
They're within the, they're within the distance.
Six hundred and sixty-five.
The back corner.
Yeah. And in terms of road frontage, they're on a cul-de-sac, so they're, how much road, I know it's...
We don't, we're not controlling for road frontage.
Okay.
That's not in our ordinance, but that's the only way I've found other cities controlling the number of signs. Only larger, properties with larger road frontage were allowed signs of that type.
The purpose for this here, though, is directly related to the businesses that are on I-95 to attract I-95 traffic.
Correct.
And so, therefore, that's the reason why the request for the higher signs to get over the trees and be able to seen down the highway to attract as many people, correct?
That is correct.
So, that's not something we would have. These sign ordinances are not something you would typically see. There's no way we'd have this tall signs in our town, other than the fact for the 95 traffic to track the traffic, which obviously we have large businesses, people that come to that business area.
Absolutely.
And we want to make sure we get more of our share.
Yes.
Any other questions at this time? It's not a public hearing, but... Go ahead, sir.
You having some comments on this again, because this is something we talked about in the last meeting.
But my question, I guess, is kind of what Mr. Barber was saying. This is for the 95 corridor traffic. However, the six hundred and sixty feet will extend into the town, and you've got businesses that would basically be affected by that, and it's pretty densely populated, that with businesses with the Golden Corral, that would be included. You've got Waffle House, that would be included. You've got two potential B3 businesses going in on 70 with the Kobe States and whatever. Would those be included also?
This exhibit shows all the properties that would be, as much as you can tell who's who. Waffle House is not in it, from what I can tell. Golden Corral is just on the edge of it. I think they actually have a sign right on the edge of it, because they had that same requirement, I believe, years ago.
And I can tell you, that sign is very highly illuminated into the neighborhood.
Yes, yes.
But yeah, that was just my question. That six hundred and sixty foot right away from the 95 corridor, how much would it intrude on the other areas and the existing residential areas, being Pine Acres, with the illumination of the signs and proposed development over in the, in the area that we're having some litigation in?
RV park. Oh, no, it does not extend as far as that parcel. That's, that's back in here. So, it would not extend that far back. Really, this will really, there's not a whole lot of growth opportunity, other than changing businesses in that area, except for this cul-de-sac. It's pretty much the new growth area for this district, and then any change in businesses that would thus require a new, a new pole sign. Most of the ones that want them have them, I would think, at this point, unless they change over.
That was going to be my next question. Would the businesses changing over with this new sign ordinance? Is that currently higher than some of the existing signs there?
No, the standard, the fifty to a hundred is the same standard we had in place in the past, and even the distances from the freeways, the same standard we had in the past. Only with the UDO update, they had taken away, they'd kind of taken both of these pole sign type signs and lumped them together and restricted them.
So, what was the reasoning of the UDO to take that out?
I don't know if it was fully understood or discussed, from what I could tell. I don't know. It had to do with some statutory changes, but I think the fix maybe wasn't anticipated.
Gentlemen, any other questions? Tony, sorry, but is that addressed your questions?
Most of them.
All right. I don't think they know the answer to the last one.
I know what triggered the change had to do with statutory changes, but I think the fix maybe wasn't what we wanted.
I think a lot of things were changed that we didn't discuss, that we didn't think were going to be changed. That's another subject.
I have one question. Have you seen any what's one-way signs? And what I mean by that is, they only shine outward, not inward the other way. So, if you're coming from town, you actually wouldn't see those signs, because they're, the purpose of those signs are not really to attract people from in-town to there. It's to attract people from the highway to there. So, I'm saying is, because that would, I didn't know if that was, because the deal is, any type of illumination back towards town would be eliminated if it was only a one-way sign. You know what I'm saying? I don't know if they make, or if that's a fact. You see what I'm saying? I mean, we're trying to eliminate the illumination of these signs back towards our residential areas. That was, I think that's really some of Tony's response to his concern, was people see these signs in their neighborhoods, and they're illuminated all, you know? I can understand that why they wouldn't want that.
You know, I think the further you go back from the highway, the more likely you're going to see that situation, because the only way to capture both lanes of traffic is to have it be more or less parallel to traffic. But I think as you get closer to the highway, you're more likely to see the signs turn the other way, so you get visibility from both lanes. But...
I understand.
That's only speculation, not having studied it, but that's just an observation.
Gentlemen?
Where's the...
198.
198.
Page 195.
No, we're looking at... Page 198.
I'm going to be approving the class.
Motion and a second to approve. Thank you. We'll move on to business item number two.
Do you need consistency statement? Approval of consistency statement?
The motion was for both.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Thank you. Do you need a second?
Anyway. We'll move on now to new business. I need consideration and approval to adopt resolution number 625, directed at the town clerk.
Mr. Mayor and Council, so as you said, this is an annexation request. This is the first step in the process. The property is located in the ETJ and partially in the county outside of the ETJ. It's split right along the creek in this area, the area with number one on it. This is received, actually, the whole parcel had received preliminary plat approval back in, I believe, 2007 by the county. And then our ETJ got expanded to cover half of this property. The property's been kind of re-energized, and they've come through with a preliminary plat at the county for the west half and got approval for that. But there's no, there's no, the county doesn't have utilities for it. They don't want to serve it for utilities. The applicant is requesting annexation, and they're going to develop the other half through the town's planning process, and they're requesting town utilities. And the way they would provide utilities is, utilities department will put a master meter on probably both ends for both, because it's essentially almost two developments in one, and provide services that way. And this would be a remote annexation. We're allowed ten percent of our town to be remote, remote annexation, and we can't go beyond that. And so, it's something that we need to do wisely, make sure that we annex the right properties for the right reasons, and that's really up to the town to decide. This property is located, again, out here by Smithfield, West Smithfield Elementary, and the town, town boundary is kind of down in here. So, it's quite a ways out from the current town boundary. And so, it's just something else the town should consider. Do you remember the figure I gave you for how much the town is remote annexation? Is it like two percent?
Currently?
Currently?
Yes.
Yeah, it's around two percent. And so, with that, I guess, any questions you may have?
I don't know if it's a question, but a concern I have is, with the annexation of the property, it seems to me that it'd be challenging for us to provide the services that's isolated in that area. And when you, just to clarify, when you mentioned this, they are only asking for utilities from the water sewer division?
Correct. I think utility, electrical utilities from Duke. And again, the western half comes with vested rights. They have preliminary plat for, I think I could have glued it in here, I think it's roughly eighty lots. And in the town, I think there'd be another, another thirty lots, something close to that. You have the plat in there?
But is this, this here is just to investigate the cost for doing it, right? This is actually not approving it?
This is a resolution to have the clerk, to the clerk, to do her investigation.
Right. So, it's not approving anything. It's just simply saying, we're giving her the right permission to go and do it, and then bring back the information to us, and then we can make decisions.
Then there's a public hearing.
Right, right. Public hearing, and then we make the decision.
Correct.
So, this is nothing to do with making a decision. It's just saying, do we want to let her spend her time coming up with that?
Correct.
What else you got to do? No. I know that's not true.
What's involved in determining the sufficiency of the position? I mean, I'm looking at stuff, and all their old checkmarks on here.
You have to make sure that the person, that the owner who signed it, you have to make sure that they own the land, that there's no, that's a big thing.
That's right, the percentages are right. It's clerical.
Yeah.
And administrative.
Yeah, it's, nothing substantive.
No.
No offense, it's clerical.
So really, they could...
We're preserving the question for another day.
Well, because the key is too, if you annex it, then you obviously have to provide services other than just water and sewer, and maybe electric, whatever, still police and fire and whatever. Is that area already covered by a different fire department, already? That's ours, so we're already covering it with fire anyway. We don't cover the police of it. How far away would that be to your nearest, your nearest service area? It's a good ways away?
Yeah, the city limit.
Can you point the city limit line out?
Twenty miles, I imagine.
Now, so then, let me ask this question to you, Stephen. The question is, the, since the issue is obviously that they, that the county can't provide them the services, that's just why they're coming to us, correct?
The county didn't want to.
They didn't want to?
They didn't want to provide the services to this development.
So, I mean, I don't know why they didn't wanna do that, but...
Well, part of it is in our, part of it is in our jurisdiction, and they give us first right to refuse. And so, Ted is, Ted would love to serve this utilities, whether in-town or out-of-town rates, and then the question is, they just assume have it serviced the whole thing.
Well, but my, so my, what my question is, though, is, if the county's making already, my understanding is that they, I see all the building that they're doing, and I know they gotta be strapped for resources eventually, 'cause they just can't keep building houses at that pace, out there providing services to it without getting some additional stuff done. So my view is, my question is, is this only a, perhaps, a beginning of what we might end up seeing more of, as more people ask for more services from us, as we go forward? What do you think? 'Cause you know what the, I'm asking you to shoot in the dark, I know that...
I can tell you that we are getting more requests for just this thing, for satellite annexation. I mean, they're coming in quite regular right now. So we're going to have to be cautious about what we pick and choose, and how you wanna grow the community, because the whole idea of satellite annexation is, eventually, you're going to grow to that point, so that you're going to grow your town, you can't grow it any other way anymore. You can't go out and annex unless people want you to annex. So these are opportunities for you, you know, you gotta make sure that you're willing to look at this as a growth pattern for the town of Smithfield.
And that's why, that's what I'm saying, that's what I was trying to say, is that, is this something that if you set this precedent, then, as the county continues to become more restrictive on what they're willing to do, because they only have so much resources to spend, that that would have the builders more looking towards us, since we've given an example that we're willing, our willingness to do that? Which then would help us if we do within that. I think that you're gonna have to have a circle that you draw a line and say, we just can't go enough other than this, until we expand, fill that hole, and then expand again. Just saying, but...
Well, and I think our ETJ makes up part of that already. And that's the whole idea of having it, is having a planning area that we already have things that meet our UDO and our code, so that it's very simple for us to go out and make those areas part of the town.
Are they in our ETJ?
Part of it.
Part of it.
How close would we be to our 10% if we were to, if this was to become annexed, 'cause it was like 91 houses or something?
I don't know, as a land area, if it would be a significant change?
Yeah, it's not gonna have a lot, but those are things that we would come back and provide you with if you want us to start looking into.
That's probably...
Right now, yeah, we haven't even started.
But we have a cap of 10%, is that, can that be changed, though?
No, that's state, that's statutory.
But if it becomes contiguous?
Then it goes, that's right. That's the idea, you wanna, if you create a satellite annexation, you wanna be able to grow to it, so it's no longer a satellite annexation, then you can continue to grow that way.
Don't you think it'd be a good idea if you have a public hearing, and not just be proper, and everybody, and have someone to be notified? I want to know.
Yeah, we can do our best, at least post signs.
Because if they see that, and they may say, well, this is something we want a part of, or no, we don't. I think it'd be important that we look at it in that perspective, and also, I think it'd be important for our staff to give us analysis, of what impact their services, for example, just arranging a traffic, you have to add that part of the...
That on the way to the door?
I guess the request to us is, do we wanna take a further look?
That's right. So...
I think it's worth to take a look at, 'cause it doesn't cost us anything, but meantime, we know probably our greatest growth is gonna come from 70 Highway and 78, but you know, we're nowhere near the 10%. And what percentage of growth is gonna go that way, and I think we all know that most of it's gonna come 70, I would assume, at first.
Well, we're seeing quite a bit of growth out 210 Highway.
Yeah, and 210 as well.
Which is fairly, just north of this place.
I just, we now think we just need to look into it further and let this parish do our due diligence, and then we come out and look at it, but you know, also, thinking big picture about that annexation, or something about made quite easier, quite a bit closer as well.
And this is the first step in an annexation process, this is, this is the first step, this will be the first of three meetings. The public hearing won't come until after I've certified it, and given my findings to you next month, and then in November will be the public hearing, so we have, this is a three-month process.
Doesn't hurt to ask a few questions.
I do have a question.
About the annexation.
The red areas, what are they? You got a triangle right there, due north of the site, and then you got a, it's not really a square, but it looks square-ish.
This is the school.
Yeah, that's what?
That's Smithfield Elementary.
Okay, that's where...
West Smithfield.
Elementary.
So the county already has water out there then?
Yeah. Yeah. Ted would be tapping onto county water lines and putting a master meter on. And this one, I'm not sure what this one is.
Is that the annex?
Happy annex.
Thanks.
This is an issue, because this is in the early 90s, where we did not annex out of Hope Lake, boys did annex out of Hope Lake, and they came and asked Smithfield to annex at first, we turned it down, 'cause it was too far out.
I'll entertain a motion to allow the clerk to begin.
Take a motion for the clerk to begin.
Second. Second. Favor.
Thank you.
The next business item is consideration and approval to allow Grace Community Assembly of God to hold a community marketplace twice a month on Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m., beginning in May 2019, and ending in October 2019.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. So, this is sort of an unusual request, because the use is, doesn't quite fit any clear categories in the code. Appears to be a temporary use to me, and I'm describing what it is here, it's kind of a craft and hobby sale, it's kind of a garage sale with clothing and toys, possible furniture and household goods, and also produce. So the gentleman that's organizing this, on behalf of the church, he has a large, a large garden, and he wants to sell his vegetables through here. And I understand this is gonna be something to benefit the church, increase community of the church, recruit additional people to the church, that sort of thing. The property is Grace Assembly of God, next to the track. The blue here is roughly the layout that they're proposing, kinda at the edge of the parking lot during event days. And so, some of the confusion regarding this is, table 6.5 in our UDO currently says, temporary uses are special uses with supplementary standards. I don't think that's what it ever used to be, and I'm not quite sure, we haven't been processing temporary uses of special use permits since I've been here, so. 7.30, what happened is, they took a lot of the different temporary uses and combined them into one section. So 7.30.3 addresses sale of goods other than agricultural products, it says no temporary use permit is required. 7.30.4, sale of egg products grown off-site, it's allowed three times per year, no more than 180 days per year. And then, garage sales are allowed two days per year, no single sale more than two consecutive weekends, or more than 72 hours in a single week. So none of these requirements neatly fit this use, so, brought it to the council to see what the council thinks.
My question is, could this be competitive with some other activities within the town? Don't we have a seasonal farmer's market, or we used to? And, you know, other people sell produce, we have people sell produce, and so, I mean, is that not competitive with them? For one thing, I mean, that's one thing, so are you, are you being competitive with businesses, taking away from businesses in the area by doing it? That's our first question. Second question is, I really didn't see, other than just having a place where people come periodically, how the church benefits from the sale, since they're allowing people to sell, and assuming the people that sell is making the money. So does the church get a kickback on it? Do they sell space? Do they, I mean, I don't, I mean, is it just a, is it a, is it a flea market atmosphere? 'Cause there's lots of flea markets out there, too, and we have someone 301 that fills up regularly.
Right. It was explained to me, I don't know if the applicant is here, he is here, so he could probably explain a little more detail, it was explained to me that it was gonna benefit the church in terms of recruitment of members, and have members an opportunity to sell their wares, and that the benefit would be towards the community of the church. The applicant is here, if you'd like, to have him come forward and explain it in more detail.
Please, if you don't mind.
My name is Mark Stauk. My address is 829 Creach Church Road, beautiful downtown Kenley. I'm sorry, would you repeat the question, please?
Sure, okay. So, yeah, I said it's gonna benefit the church, so I'm trying to figure out, how does it benefit the church, so, other than just having people come to the church building? The question is, you know, are you, so are you selling spaces in the lots, you know, spots? Are you getting a kickback from what's sold? You know, does it go to a mission drive, or, you know, the church building fund, or, I'm saying, I wanna know, how are you benefiting from it, other than just people showing up in the church parking lot?
One of the benefits would be to any of the groups within the church who want to raise money to fund some of their mission work, would be one way. We don't really anticipate to sell space, and just to address one of your comments from earlier, I would only hope that we could actually be competitive with somebody. I don't suspect that that will really be on the table. I don't suspect that this will draw any kind of a big crowd, I don't see it as a, an infringement on anybody else's business. It's really more for the church to have an opportunity to just engage with the community, and have an opportunity for possibly people to sell their craft goods, and just be a part of a social group.
I think the real, the real issue is, if this is an outreach, I think it's wonderful. If it's gonna become a business, then I think it falls into a different category, if it's gonna become like a flea market, if you will, which I know that's not the intent, but if it's an outreach, I think it's a wonderful idea, it'd be, it's more of an outreach opportunity. I mean, I can't ever see this being a business, per se. And I'm the produce guy, and I just hope that we have enough produce to sell, so it's not, it's not a business venture. And our, the sales from our produce, a major part of that will be for missions.
Just out of curiosity, what caused y'all to pick this site versus somewhere else?
Well, that's our church, and it's in a good location, and the layout just seemed to fit, so, it just seemed natural. And it's in-house.
What plans do y'all have to do with the parking and stuff? You think you have adequate parking?
The space to the north of the U-shaped blue area can all be parking. How many spaces are there, Ryan? Maybe 70? 50 to 70? I mean, I would hope that that would be a problem.
Your, your, your area that you allocated for your booths are not really, 'cause I know, my daughter goes to discharge, 'cause I know their church very well, and the, that's not really a large space, selling things, just saying, so you're not, how many, how many booths, per se, would you anticipate you having in that small space? That's not that big a space.
No. 10 to 20.
Yeah, it's not gonna be a big...
12 by 12 areas.
Is there a reason why you selected, you wanna do it every Saturday from May through October?
Not every Saturday. Not every Saturday.
Oh, I'm sorry. Twice a month, I say, okay, twice a month, I'm sorry.
And it will be less than twice a month?
It'll be fun to start with.
I'm sure of that.
The only thing we're asked to approve is for this time period only, not a permanent license.
Yes. Yep. And then I suspect from there, we would just review for future...
Do you know when the, when is the, of course, I don't know, when is the latest information on the Boca Derry Road expansion being completed? Because that could be a traffic issue also, it's already a traffic issue anyway, now. So the question is, would it be completed by May? Is that the intent, that it would be, that, especially for that particular area, that there would traffic, the flow of traffic, that part of the highway would be completed by May of 2019? That's just coming up? Before you know it, it'll be here?
I'd like to know that myself.
I don't have the answer.
I don't, I don't believe it's going to be completed by May.
So traffic could be a problem for them also? I mean...
It could be, but, I mean, it'd be the same problem everybody else has there. Saturdays, you're gonna have less traffic than the rest of the week, so it may make up for it. Just so I understand, sir, a good portion of the revenue is generated from this, then do not go back to the church?
Not directly to the church, no. Well, and yes, it could. I mean, if there are groups that are generating some income for missions, that would go to their missions, but it would go through the church.
But if I'm a private person and I wanna sell my wares, I take my money home, if that's what I want.
Exactly.
What determines who's gonna get those spaces?
Again, please?
What determines, what criteria are you using to give away, so you're not charging them, you're gonna give away those spaces? What is the criteria for you giving someone a space? I mean, like, if your sons of Christ wants to do it, clearly, you'll give them a space, right? If you got a teen group that wants to raise money, they're gonna have it, you're gonna give them a space. I understand that, that's directly related to the church, great, wonderful, I'm glad they got an opportunity. they got an opportunity to raise money. But the spaces, that's not going to that. You've got somebody that's got some hobby stuff, that they do at home, they build birdhouses, and so they decide they want to sell. Well, somebody else sells, they may do stained glass window paintings or whatever, because I know those people do that, and so they want to do it. What's the criteria that you're going to use? They say it's church activities, I understand that, that's not a question. But what are you going to use for criteria for the, so, the non-church funds going back to the church places? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Not really, but let me see if I can answer. We don't have any criteria today. We have a vision and an idea, and hopefully a special use permit, and we'll sort of make up the rules as we go, just to some degree. There's no other way to do this, from my perspective. We're just going to have to see, I mean, we'll set up event, initially, 12 by 12 spaces, and a lot 12 by 12 spaces, and then adapt accordingly. Does that sort of answer your question?
It answers my question, I don't know if it appeases my mind, but it answers my question.
So, let me ask, plan director, this is a temporary request.
It's a temporary use request.
Right, so can the council put restrictions on it, like a?
The temporary use section states right in the beginning that the purpose for the temporary use supplementary standards for the council put time restrictions on the use, such as for, you know, what he's asking, a couple months.
That's it.
During the summer, and that's appropriate. Now, to muddy the waters a little bit, with the UDO update, all temporary uses got lumped under special uses, and I don't think that was the intent, but that's something we need to address. As a practice, as a practice, the town has never treated temporary uses as special use permits, and so.
I think it's the current interpretation.
My interpretation is that we ought to continue in the practice that we had in the past, issuing temporary use permits for such uses.
I think the question that he asked, though, I don't think you answered the question. The question was, can we put conditions on the special use, other than time and dates? So, if we say, okay, we'll allow you to have it this time period, we'll have this many boxes, and that's it?
Only this number of booths?
Only this number of booths, we can, I mean, is that something we can do? That's the question.
That is, I believe that is all appropriate.
Well, I think the idea and the concept is wonderful. I think anything that'll bring people to the church grounds, perhaps work as outreach to get them involved in the church, to get that community out, involve in your church, and attract people. He's asking for temporary, he's asking for nine to one, two Saturdays a month, from May to October, for one year. And you're not building anything out there, you're not building shelters or anything, you're not putting permanent tables.
No.
And as I understand it, if I wanted to go out there and sell my, offer for sale my baseball card collection, my basketball card, I could, I could go out there, and who knows, it may attract me to your church.
That would be wonderful.
Yeah.
Now, the only thing I will say that I agree with you, however.
However.
However, the question comes back to, what we do for one, we have to do for all?
I agree.
You understand?
I do.
So, that means, are we willing for every church in this town to offer on Saturdays from nine to one, a flea market? Okay? Regardless of what they do with the funds, are we willing to open the door up for every church in the town of Smithfield, from May till every other weekend, from May to October, twice a month, to have a flea market in their parking lot? Because that's what you're saying, because now if we do it, then anybody that comes by, I don't see how we could deny. I'm just saying, if we don't put special use, or we don't do something, I'm just saying, that's my concern, because what you do for one, you do for all. That's only fair. I mean, and if we decide, this is like the other things that we've done, that I always agree with, but once we've done it, then we've done it, and I'm, I'll stand hard fast that we'll do it for anybody. Just that once we've done it, we've done it. So, if the council wants to do it, once we've done it, if anybody comes here, they know my vote is yes, because once we've done it one time. That's my point to you, I'm just saying, my point is, that's why I want to do due diligence. I'm not opposed necessarily, but I want to make sure we do due diligence to understand that if we do this, then we're opening the door up for everybody that wants to do it. Is that okay? I'm not saying it's not, but you understand, once we've done it, we've done it. So, that's my question to you, actually, you think, what do you think? You think it's okay if every church did it in town?
I think churches are engaged in a lot of different activities, and different people want to do different things. Every restaurant we pass in here, we have them sell alcohol, we, you know, we approve every restaurant to sell alcohol, we approve every bar to sell alcohol. So, why aren't we going to allow a church to have a bazaar sale, or whatever they call it, church bazaar? I mean, we have yard sales, auctions at our church every year.
Twice a month?
About twice a month. Every year. I bet the methodist church does, too. They have fundraiser.
We usually get ours beforehand.
Well, I think that the help is church, and just, you know, just to see how it works as being a temporary thing, we can look back and even come back next October in 2019, and say, whoa, it sure was hot, can we? And there was a, I figured that would happen.
And he's asking for permission to do it every other week, he's not, he's already said he probably won't.
Probably won't, so, you know, anything, anything for outreach for the church, I think what we just don't want is to have a 301 yard sale, flea market, and that's really what we're.
Don't anticipate that.
I wouldn't think so.
Don't know what they anticipate, but not that.
You run out of vegetables at 10 o'clock, you go into the house. Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen.
I believe we approve the request.
I don't know, it's automatically yes, because it has to go with the majority.
We want to hear you say that. I think we're in good shape, Mr. Barlow.
Thank you, sir.
If your church wants to have a flea market, go address it.
Please pray for us next Sunday.
It's not even 10:00. Some of the towns in Smithfield is helping the country, so they can do what they want to do, it don't matter.
That area is Chinese, church activity.
Okay, we'll move on to business item number four, final report and closing, closing out state awarded asset inventory and assessment grant for sewer inventory.
And good evening, everyone. This presentation is to share with the council the fruits of the labor borne by the work involved with the 2016 AIA grant awarded to the town for the assessment of the sanitary sewer system. If you recall, the reason we applied for the grant was that in 2016, the town was using some older maps, they seemed a bit outdated, they had some inaccuracies, and in general, we needed to show more data to be fully compliant with state permit regulations. So, the town applied for the grant, and we were lucky enough to be awarded the full amount of $150,000. Within the application, the town indicated we were planning to survey all the manholes in the system, we were going to video some of the troubled spots in the town, we're going to have our engineering consultant update the town's asset management plan, and we were going to use this data to upset, to update the capital improvement plan. And all that's great, but the real underlying goal was to reduce the inflow and infiltration, which was plugging the system and causing the town's treatment costs to skyrocket. So, we undertook this mission, and now the grant timeline is almost done. To close out this grant, condition eight of the grant states the result, results of our work must be presented to the governing body, so here we are. The first step was to hire a contractor to survey all the manholes. In the spring of 2017, a contractor was hired to do just that. This company surveyed every manhole in the town's system and generated a report, a report for each structure, and this is the sample of one of the reports. Each report identified the exact location of the structure with surveyed coordinates, the depth of the structure. The report will also note any defects on the inside or exterior of the manhole, and would also give the manhole overall rating. This rating amount enables the town staff to prioritize repairs to all the manholes. The survey data was downloaded and incorporated into the town's GIS database to create a more accurate map. This map is presented on the town's website. Further, the town is continuously updating the data, and the updated map is republished annually. This is the current map taken from the website, it is due to be replaced in October of 2018. Another part of the work was to hire another contractor to video certain troubled areas in the system, areas which are prone to the blockages that see, and then perhaps find out what's causing the blockages. This contractor also generated reports which are incorporated into the GIS database, and this data helps form the basis of the preventive cleaning schedule by the town. This is the sample of one of those reports, it shows the overall condition of the pipe and indicates where some areas of interest may be, as well as where any trouble may be located by color code. The actual video efforts can and often do find other issues. In our case, we found some pipe breaks. These breaks were repaired immediately, once discovered. Here you can see some infiltration of groundwater into the system, that's water flowing over a rock, or the cracked roof of the pipeline, or a complete breakage. One other thing the video told us, the town has an issue with root intrusion. This is not uncommon with terra cotta piping. It seems to act as a magnet to vegetative roots, and having root infestation goes hand in hand with the use of that pipe. So, yet another contractor was hired to begin to deal with these roots. They used a chemical injection that coats and kills the roots. Furthermore, their work is guaranteed for two years against re-intrusion of the roots. These were the first two areas treated. One area in South Smithfield along Chestnut, Crescent, and Sunrise, the other, just in August of this year, was all Pine Acres from Ash to Aspen. As I mentioned, the manhole reports give an overall rating which allowed the town to prioritize the manhole rehabilitation. A separate contractor that specializes in such rehabilitation was hired to begin this process. Unfortunately, this process is expensive, so we don't have the funds to rehabilitate more than a handful of manholes at a time, but we did begin the process. Here's a look at one of the manholes we rehabilitated. Note the original condition where the interior walls of the structure are crumbling and being eaten, eaten away by sewer gases. Also, please note the lack of defined channel at the bottom for the water to pass through the manholes. Now see the obvious improvement. The walls were treated with a coating of cement and then coated with an epoxy liner that will block sewer gas from eroding the structure in the future. As mentioned, the town's engineering consultant also examined all 18 lift stations to assess their condition and identify potential repair projects. This resulted in the update of the town's asset management plan and a suggested list of improvements. Here's a control panel that was identified as being in need of updating. Here's the updated panel. Since the panel was updated, callouts to the station concerning control issues have been virtually eliminated. The town's capital improvement plan is also updated. The updated plan incorporated long-term programs to address the sewer lines, the lift stations, and the manholes. Here is the updated plan adopted by council in June of this year. Please note the three redlined items. The town has committed to the continuous program of repair and rehabilitation to help modernize our sewer system. Okay, that's a lot of repair going on, what's the impact of the various programs? Have we seen reduction in the inflow and infiltration? Most importantly, have the costs gone down? This is the cost of sewage treatment in the years leading into the grant and the subsequent programs. Please note the decline in cost in the two years preceding our undertaking. Now see the decline over the last two years, two, three years. Pending confirmation from the auditors, we have returned sewage treatment costs back to levels that are historically expected. Also recall, we have done this despite having multiple sewage treatment rate increases and experiencing significant growth within the town's treatment area. So, in summary, the AIA was a two-year grant program, we identified all, and assessed all of our manholes, we also assessed our lift stations. All this information led to repair efforts and long-term programs which are now established and will be carried forward, costs are in return to expected levels. It was the best $150,000 we could have used. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them at this time.
Questions, comments for Ted?
I got a question from Greg.
This is just the sewer, and the water will probably come next month.
How much is the sewer down on an annual basis?
If you look, what do you, by annual, you can see the return, last year, I think, the auditors confirmed we were back under the $2 million mark, it was 1.8 million.
It cost us how much? $150,000.
It was, the, the program, the grant was $150,000, and we spent that to start these programs.
On an annual basis, you saved how much in dollars?
Well, from where it was a couple of years ago, we've saved over $1 million. The, yes, that's right, there was a match on the town, the town spent $15,000.
Nice work. Not a bad job.
Thank you all, gentlemen, but it was, it's the entire staff and the entire town.
You've got a good job. Mr. Creto, you mentioned in your presentation, some of the manhole, we didn't have the funds, are we going to?
Oh, no, the long-term program for doing, for continuing the manhole rehab is number nine, that'll continue on out for as many years as we can. We attack, they're roughly between $5,000 and $8,000 to rehabilitate a single manhole, so it's going to take a while to get to. There aren't that many that are in dire need, but we're going to go after them as we get them.
I'm going to also add, really quickly, Ted didn't mention it, but this is a statewide grant, there's a lot of communities around the state that received this grant, went after it. Our utility department is the first in the state to return this grant and complete it. So, it goes to show you how, how hard they work and how dedicated they are.
Okay, our next business item was added. The consideration to approve the amended fiscal year 2018 schedule for SRAK rates for council employees. Gary, come forward.
In July, we came before you to get some clarification on our fee schedules, some miscommunication by us during the budget process, and at that time, it was brought up about the possibility of maybe giving employees the benefit of free memberships and what the tax responsibilities were for that. Since then, we have been advised by Mark III, a benefit services company, that it was not taxable, and, you know, we're of that same opinion. So, we've never got any clarification as to which direction council wanted to proceed, but we just want to get a clarification on the fee structure for employees and Johnston County School employees, as we've done in the past.
I appreciate your work, Gary, and I appreciate council's indulgence, indulging me. When this first came before us, I thought you were asking for 50% off the resident community rate for town employees, and 25% off resident community rate for Johnston County School employees. And since that, I'm reading what you've got here, that's changed to no charge for full-time employees and still 25% off resident applicable rate. Is that the request?
That has been based on discussions that we've had in the last several months at the council meeting.
Was that your proposal to us, your request to us?
My request was declared, my original request was to clarify from the budget sessions what our intent was at that time.
My, and I realize this was on consent agenda, and I realize it was taken off consent agenda at my request, and I guess the issue I have, or the consternation I have, is that, number one, we went through a budget process, we talked about employee salaries, raises, benefits, we commissioned a salary study, we did not pass or address free SRAK rates, and we're still waiting, I guess, for the salary study to come in. I'm just, as most of you know, I'm just sort of, we have a budget process for a reason, and we make amendments to that based on unforeseen circumstances and emergency situations, so I really, in my thought process, think this ought to be a part of the budget procedure, and not a, not as a motion two months after we do that. Also, in looking at... Also, in looking at the Recreation and Aquatic Center, if you look at the budget, the trend is our revenues are going down, our expenditures are going up, and we've still got close to half a million dollars in annual debt payments. I think that SRA is a wonderful asset in this community. I think it's been a lightning rod. I was looking at the school report that Mike sent us and hopefully they'll come and report it to us. We have over 75% of our schoolchildren on free and reduced lunch. My concern is, is that we're asking the citizens, a lot of citizens who, number one, I've heard can't even get transportation to SRA, number two, can't afford to be members there, to pay for free memberships. Now I realize it's, we're talking probably $6,000 to $8,000 in lost revenue per year, but in the words of council member Barbara, if it's offered to one, it's offered to all of them. We could have 150 town employees out there, which in some respects would be wonderful, but it has a bigger impact on the budget because you've got wear and tear on your equipment and that type of thing. I understand fully how council feels and I'm okay. Like I've said many times, that's the purpose of our democracy. We've got seven people, seven individual ideas. I don't think it's a bad idea for our employees. I just think the process to me is, we consider those things as part of the benefit package and the budget package, which I thought we were going to look into with the salary study. But that was all, yeah.
Yeah, I have some comments I'd like to share. I recall from our budget session, we did touch this topic and we got overlooked. I think the thing is, is, you know, if we, for $6,000 to $8,000, what you're looking at dollar-wise, if you prevent one heart attack, one open heart attack, we've been told recently that we have very little. But to me, it's valuable to have 150 employees all show up out there. Probably not likely, but I understand your concern, Council National. And it's about the budget issues you mentioned. You're exactly right. We do have some budget issues. I don't think that this small number of people have that great of impact on the effect it would have on the facility. I make a motion to approve your request.
Second.
I'll second.
Motion, second. All voters approved.
Get the vote.
And David. Okay. Now we'll come on to the point of council members' comments.
I have a few comments I'd like to share with the council. Serving on the agency, electric cities, power value committee, I was able to go to a couple of their meetings this past, since our last session, and I was pretty, we had a very positive experience and learned a lot of great things about ongoing problems and stuff, a lot about retention of alignment and the concerns there. But I just want to highlight Smithfield and how wonderful we're doing with our program. We have very, very committed rates compared overall. We've got a rate-stabilization funding place. We're going to AMI smart meters. And I just wanted to say a few things moving forward. I want to spend more time with Mr. Credo and yourself and possibly look at having a little computer to talk about some things. For example, with the AMI, the smart meter program, the staff is really busy. They don't have time to really educate the public on how to use it. But having them access that portal on the computer and be able to see their usage will help them understand these things. But furthermore, we have some opportunities and we need to talk with staff and figure out what revenue we need or what path to take. But we have some opportunities for some economic development in some of these areas and I'd love for us to talk further about that. Ultimately, the other thing is too, and Mr. Credo has talked to us about it before, but our load management program, we are going to a meter system and I don't know if I shared it with him, I know we, I found out that those load management switches are totally interfaceable with our system. Hopefully, we can look at making that better because when we save money, our citizens save the money, and further, the town saves that demand rate. So hopefully, we can, when we have time, we can move to that program. Because the current system sends out the signal to cut it off or give it a credit, but we don't know if we're getting it back. The new switches would actually, and there's a whole other level to that. I mean, you're looking at these new homes or if a person wants to rehab a home, you could potentially offer them, you know, a different tiered program, kind of like Apex has, but they choose what rate they want to be into it. One other option we have with the AMI, I know we haven't got there yet, is having a prepaid program. So if a customer would like to have that as a benefit, you don't have trouble managing their finances or running short, they can do it from that perspective as well. But we need another rate structure for that. But I did get to meet with the guy from UFS that done our utility cost of service study and our rate comparison. He's very in touch to where we are and it's hugely important that this board stays focused on seeing where those projections go so we stay in line, making sure our revenues stay even. And having talked with him, they also offer some infrastructure assessments for water sewer and having the data they already have on our town, moving forward with looking at the water plant thing, that may be something the council will take into consideration. But I talked to Mr. Credo about that. He seemed to feel comfortable where we're at, but just want to throw that out there and wanted to tell you guys, bragging on town, how well we're doing in that division. So thank you, Mr. Credo, for what you did.
Anyone else?
I don't want to take a minute. I'm going to single them out. Ms. Emegamo and Pam Laffey are here. We have talked for a while, but I appreciate citizens who get involved in their community. You know, we're seven guys up here who are elected to represent you guys. It's your community and ours. It's not our community by ourselves, it's all of our community. I just appreciate your involvement, your concerns, and look forward to working with you. And any other citizen, that's why we're here. I mean, this is your town and I just appreciate you being here. And we always have a few citizens here to come on a regular basis. I just, I appreciate that. It's how we continue, we'll continue to be a great town. It's when our citizens care.
I have a comment. We, we're in the process of planning what I'm calling D4 meetings, which is District Four. I'm trying to get my people in West Smithfield more involved. We need people, we need to have this room full of people in West Smithfield, too. There's lots of great things going on in West Smithfield, moving that way. More and more of our town will be going that way as we continue to grow and we want to make sure that our people are involved. So we're going to start having some meetings. Myself and Michael Scott's already talking about it. We're doing some planning now as we talk and so we're hoping to find a way to energize them and get them involved and so we may be calling upon some of you guys that might want to attend, if you can. We're glad to have you, especially those of you who are at large, because at large means you're a part of West Smithfield, too.
Absolutely.
So when I go, my point is that we have four, they have four district, I mean district councilmen down there that represents them and they need to recognize that. They don't just vote for me, they vote for three more guys plus the mayor. So we want to make sure that they are well represented, they should know that. So we're going to make sure they communicate with them. Anyway, that'll be coming up pretty soon.
Mrs. Manager Scott and I went to a meeting, I guess it's appropriate, I can talk about a little bit.
Absolutely.
That this concerned citizens for successful schools had over at the Laffey Building. And Ms. Susan Lasser was kind of hitting it up and we had an attorney from the University of North Carolina. What was his, what was his name? I mean, I mean, what was his department?
Mark, I can't think of his last name.
What was he, he was the head of an apartment for diversity in schools and things of that nature.
Urban joiner or something like that?
Yeah. And sure. And anyhow, we, it was a long meeting as far as getting started and he had several maps drawn about who lives where. You would believe, one thing, for instance, Quorum Holders at 150% capacity, but out of that capacity, only what, 110% of people live there that go to school there. And you'd be like, wow. And then Smithfield, Selma, we were, we're at 89% capacity or 88% capacity if I believe correctly, but Corinth and Cleveland were the big ones and more people, I couldn't, I couldn't believe this, but more people left Cleveland than any other school except for Triple S. And don't know what, why the reason was. They could be homeschooled, they could go to private school, charter schools, or any reason like that for that. But anyhow, in the end, to get to the main potatoes of it, they have a computer system over it or something, I believe is the name of it, and it takes any kind of demographic, racial, monetary, you can break it down 100 different ways and your head starts spinning, but at the end, it was basically equal out disparity in schools. And it had it where, in the end, that the schools were all at 98 to 100% capacity, including our school, and it was all 50/50 monetarily, racially, all equal, all around the county. And the money was all, was very close and then comes up the housing of each house. I mean, it was broken down in so many ways and it was very interesting to see a map drawn like that where a lot of things were equal that are not equal now. And it's just a, you know, nobody's saying we're going to do this. Matter of fact, they asked if anybody had any questions and Susan looked at me, she said, "You got a question, David?" And Ross Renfro was up in front, I said, "Yeah, do it, Ross." And everybody kind of got a kick out of that. But it was, there's a lot of things that can happen and it will happen probably in the near future, that being 10 years or less, because there's going to have to be another high school. Where are we going to put it? How does it break down? Why do you put it? Do you put it where you want growth to go? Do you put where the need is? You know, do you put it near Corinth or do you put it near Wilson Mills and pull from that way? There are several different ways, but I think we're going to get him to come speak, maybe give a 15-minute speech and show us. Hopefully, we can keep him to 15 minutes. But very interesting, you know, I kind of went in it with, you know, yeah, sure. And then at the end, you go, wow, you really, you really do this and it would mean a lot to all the schools in the area, you know. And, you know, everybody, it seems to, there are several kids that have gone to Clayton and from Smithfield and, you know, there's either here or there. Why? A lot of it has to do with sports and different things. Of course, you can't prove it or disprove it, but, you know, we can, we need a reason to keep kids around here in our, in our schools because we have a lot of eggs around here to go to different schools. But it was just interesting to see and Princeton has a lot of, a lot of, I don't know what the word is, but anomalies that a lot of schools don't, school systems throughout the state, just because they have a, was it K through six and then a seventh high school that nobody else has. I don't know if there was maybe one other in the state. So it's just interesting to see. To see, and I hope y'all come when we do have it and we need to let that be known so all the people in the community can come see this presentation because it was, it was very good and enlightening.
Our hope is to have that speaker here for the October meeting. I've reached out to him and we're trying to figure that out, but I'm hoping we can have him here for the October meeting.
Can you invite a school board?
We certainly can.
There was two already there, Todd Sutton and Ross Renfro over there, so thanks a lot.
David, I'll tell you, that committee's existed for a number of years. I was on it for probably seven years until a couple of years ago. If the school board had listened from day one, things would look a lot different today and we'll talk about that further.
It was just interesting to see, you know, you hear people talk about how you can do it or you can do this to this, but to see it on a piece, on a map, it was, you know, things can happen. It wasn't as hard as I thought it would be. It would be, I think you'll enjoy it.
Thanks, somebody willing to take that step.
And it all comes in a vote on the Board of Education?
You got to get politics out of it, which hasn't happened yet.
One thing I did, I wanted to share is, or ask, I guess, for about four months from Christmas, believe it or not, and I would love to see our Christmas parade have more entries from floats and high school meetings. So I guess it's my challenge. I don't, we don't have a lot of people left in the room, but maybe they'll see this on television and maybe we can put something on the website. Mr. Manager, trying to encourage businesses and so forth to actually enter in floats. And I, something we discussed, I don't know if there's something we as a town could do as a prize to maybe the best float or whatever, but to try to get some enthusiasm within our community, civic groups, from organizations, from churches, from businesses and so forth, to actually put a float together and let's see what we can come up with. And again, not only the floats, but also encourage, let's maybe, Gary, talk to some of the high schools if we can to see if we can get some more participation. I know they all compete and they're all going around the state in these parades and so forth. Just that time of year and the music and so forth, I just think that it's, it's the best of and wanting to go out and shop and everything. My two cents. Manager, I'll turn it over to you at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Remember to shop Smithfield first. Just to piggyback a little bit on what Mayor Pro Tim Scott said about the utilities, we are in a partnership with several other communities and entities to try to further recruit, retain, and train utility linemen, electric linemen. We're working with Benson, Clayton, Selma, Johnson County Schools, Johnson County Industries and Electric Cities to create an apprenticeship for a lineman program. Basically, especially for kids coming out of high school this year, you can get into this apprenticeship, you go through it on Saturdays and it's free for you and you can then get into a paid apprenticeship if you do well at one of these communities, ours, Selmas, Bensons, or Clayton's. And then you can go into community college and you can get paid for that. And when you get out, you can be certified as an electric lineman, which is a great career to get into right now for someone who may not want to career track into a traditional college. There's flyers that we have out there that look like this right now about linemen. You can find it on our website. We also have a free race day at Galat and Benson where we're all going to be there. It's all for kids or people who are interested in becoming a utility lineman. So think about showing up at September 29th, somewhere between 10:00 in the morning and 6:00 in the evening. We're going to be there, our staff will be there to answer questions and try and get young people involved in this program. This is a great program. It's free for you. I can only wish that, you know, this was available to when I was coming up. Please encourage everyone you know who may not be looking at traditional college to come to that event and see what we have to offer for a great career in being a utility Couple other things I have very quickly. Most of you are aware, we have a controlled burn of three properties set up for September 15th at Brightleaf and Pitchy Street. So anyone who wants to come out and watch that, they're welcome. Also, that may adhere some of the traffic on Brightleaf Boulevard during that time. We have three properties there that are going to be burned and demolished and a new veterinary hospital will be put in its place. We're looking forward to that.
Do I get to still go in one of them?
If you want. You want. You got to be fit testing for the apparatus. But certainly, the invitation is open to anyone who wants to see what it's like to be inside a burning building. I've already been there, so it's, it's an experience.
I mentioned that to a fireman who I met who doesn't work for Town Smithfield, works in one of the county fire departments. He said, "You got to stick around long enough to clean up." That's the fun part.
When you walk home, Emery, and your, your wife gets up in the morning and says, "Why does my house smell like smoke?" You'll be able to explain, 'cause you can't just get that out of your clothes very easily. We do have, I had mentioned earlier when the gentleman was here, about our transportation land use plans. Again, that's September 18th, 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock at the SRAAC in the banquet room upstairs. Please, anyone who's interested, come attend, see what it's about, offer your input. There's an online questionnaire you can fill out, it's fairly simple.
We have paper copies of the survey at the building desk also.
Paper copies available also, so we, we need that public input from people. Remind the council, we are having an employee breakfast for recognition on September 26th from 5:00 to 9:00 in the morning. All of the food items are being donated and we're cooking them at the fire station, department heads are cooking them. I know David Stevens' group agreed to donate, I think, what, four or five hogs or something?
I thought it was a chicken.
And we appreciate that.
From courtesy.
Just a heads up, later this month, we're going to have one lane of travel closed on South Second Street between Riverside and Davis, and we're going to be replacing a water line in that area, so it'll be closed for a week or longer. And that is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I think that concludes our agenda, except for the fact that we do need to go into a closed session. Motion to go into a closed session.
So move, Mayor, pursuant to General Staff JNCGS 143-318. That is instructed by the Department of Education and, taken behalf of the Department of Public Health as written.
Has a motion, go into a closed session, in a second. Second. All favor? Go into a closed session. Thank you.